One, and welcome to our June 9th Richland School District II Regular School Board of Trustees meeting. Thank you all for being here tonight. We just got out of Executive Session and discussed matters there, and at this time, we will stand and have our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance by the Honorable Susan Brill.
The end of the 2014-15 school year has been busy and inspiring. We attended many celebratory events beautifully orchestrated by our communications and PR staff. They did amazing work with planning and organization. Thank you. The Colonial Center was an excellent new venue for our high school graduation, and those who have been in the old Coliseum can appreciate the change. We celebrated with some 2,000 graduates, and as you know, the milestone of high school graduation is one of the most memorable. I applaud our principals, administrators, and their staff for getting the work done, and most of all, our teachers for preparing our students for a future that will be meaningful and have purpose. This is an exciting time for our students, and emotional as well. You might recall the young man who was in a wheelchair, and who took some time to raise his chair so we could shake our hands, and the valedictorian of the Charter High School class who was in tears telling her personal story, and how unlikely it was that she was now a graduate with a college scholarship. Those were special moments. There were many. I'm always inspired by our students, and this year was no exception, whether they were performers or were class speakers. I say to myself, wow, we're doing a great job. Our future is bright indeed. These are the leaders of tomorrow. We also said a fond farewell to some of our staff and principals who are retiring or not returning. I have special memories of them, and remember that one thing is for sure: change. I wish them well as they explore new horizons. They will be missed. Lastly, I want to give my deepest appreciation to our new board members. Cheryl, who's not here, Amelia, and Craig. After three days of graduations, and the time spent between graduations waiting for the next one, shaking hands and hugging, you now know what your work is all about. You did a great job. There is nothing more inspiring than serving as a member of this board, and for that, I am deeply grateful. And now, praise the leaders.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. As we begin our meeting, we certainly want to acknowledge the absence of one of our board members, Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker, who extends her deepest regrets that she cannot be with us on tonight, and we wish her well, and look forward to seeing her back at our next meeting. Thank all of our fellow board members for being here tonight and being present. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Ms. Manning, second. Ms. Mackey, any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as provided to-
It's been moved by Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
Second by Ms. Brill. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our special recognition. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, I'd like to call in little Ruth to lead us in the special recognitions this evening.
I want you to use this for recording purposes if you must.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. School may be over, but we continue to learn and hear more about the wonderful achievements of our students, faculty, and staff. And we know that probably a lot of them are not going to make it here tonight, and even some that said they were coming maybe found something better to do on their summer vacation, and we understand that. But we are going to take a moment to recognize them because these are very impressive achievements. First, we have students from Richland Northeast and Spring Valley High School who were named National Merit Scholarship winners, and we'll remember Mr. Plank is going to come up, I believe, and hand out certificates. If they're not here, we will certainly get their certificates to them, and Mr. Timoney's here, so if he wants to come on up, because some of these are his students. We have Alexandria and Dream, who won the National Merit University of Alabama Scholarship with a probable career field of chemical engineering. William Edwards won the National Merit University of South Carolina Scholarship, plans on majoring in computer science. Sarabi Pula won the National Merit from Clemson University with a plan to pursue a career in biochemistry. Chance Sensala won National Merit Baylor University Scholarship with a probable career field of business. Sarah Wollam won the National Merit with a field in oncology, and Anderson Skoll, who's from Richland Northeast, I don't believe he could be here tonight, but he won a scholarship from the Merit Kenyon College. These scholarships are only about 7,600 students across the country receive these scholarships, and they total worth $34 million. And Mr., I think they called you T-Money at graduation, and I think that contributed to the huge number that Spring Valley had this year. You can stay up there. We have another one of your students, Raqib Siddique. He's not here, so let me just tell you real quickly. He won the South Carolina Stockholm Junior Water Prize, and I do want to mention this because this needs to go on record. He won this prize that is, he's going to be competing in the Nationals for coming up with a way to successfully remove lead from wastewater. And the very, very simplified version is that it involves using crushed dandelions to remove lead from wastewater. So what that means is he's found a cheaper renewable alternative for removing pollutants from wastewater, and he competes in a national competition next week. Not done with T-Money yet. We have one of his teachers to honor, and so would Michelle Spigner please come forward? Ms. Spigner has been named the South Carolina Junior Science and Humanities Symposium Teacher of the Year. This award is given in recognition of educational excellence in the sciences, engineering, or mathematics. Ms. Spigner mentors research students, as well as, as we all know, many of them have achieved great success in high school and beyond. This former Teacher of the Year is advisor for the Science National Honor Society. She sponsors Relay for Life, organizes blood drives, and so much more. Congratulations on this prestigious honor. Recently, three schools ended their year with some blockbuster awards, and we'll first call up Ridgeview High School, which has been named a National Gold Council of Excellence by the National Association of Student Councils. I believe two student council members are going to try to be with us tonight, Maya Genwright and Devon Williams, and their principal, Dr. Brenda McFoxworth, can join them up front. The National Gold Council of Excellence is awarded to those councils that demonstrate the highest level of leadership plus meet additional standards as set by the National Association of Student Councils. These councils have distinguished themselves in the proud leadership and service, foster student voice, and promoted student engagement in their projects and activities. These awards distinguish outstanding student councils by guiding student leaders and their faculty advisors through a process featuring standard-based criteria and demonstrated-based outcomes. All of the Ridgeview Student Council members have put in at least 100 hours of service, with many of them exceeding 500 hours of service to their school and community. And we can tell that these two are really great leaders because they're here on their summer vacation at the board meeting. Congratulations on this honor. Next up is Bridge Creek Elementary School, which has been awarded the 2015 National Healthy Schools Award from the Alliance for a Healthier Generation. Tonight, we have with us physical education teacher Lindsey Belleville, Bridge Creek Principal Kristen Eubanks, Ed Emmer, elementary science for the district, and Beth Berry is with us from the Alliance for Healthier Generation. This honor is given nationally to showcase and acknowledge schools which have implemented changes to create a healthier school environment. To earn this award, Bridge Creek improved its nutrition and wellness services and physical activity programs to meet or exceed stringent standards set by the Healthy Schools Program. This includes giving physical exercise opportunities to students with the programs like Turkey Trot or Jump Rope for Heart, Walk to School Days, and Girls on the Run, Integrating Movement in the Classroom, having health fairs for the staff, and I think you even had a Biggest Loser contest for your staff. Very great. They will accept their award in October, and we congratulate them now. Finally, tonight, we have another school honored for fitness, this time for safe fitness and safe activity with sports. We call up Westwood High School, which is the recipient of the Safe Sports School Award from the National Athletic Trainers Association. And we have with us their head athletic trainer, Jason Nussbaum, who was accompanied by Athletic Director Jason Powell, and Principal Ralph Schmidt, and I believe Assistant Principal Cheryl Guz is going to take the picture. In order to achieve Safe Sports School status, schools must provide safe and appropriate practice in competition fields, provide or facilitate injury intervention, educate athletes and parents on the potential benefits and risks in sports, and so much more. Westwood understands student safety demands proper planning, proper equipment, and proper staffing. And I know that it really demands that you really care about your parents and your athletes. I'm a mother of a baseball player who just suffered some broken bones, and I can tell you what a heartbreak that is, and to have people who care about you, your students, and want to keep them healthy, to keep competing, means a lot to parents. So congratulations, and thank you. And that's a wrap.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ruth. Next on our agenda is our public participation. No one has signed up at this time. However, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come and address the board, you may do so at this time. Thank you. Next on our agenda is voting on the Executive Session items. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion on our student appeals. Student number one, recommend Blythewood Academy and Laredak. Student number two, Blythewood Academy. Student number three, IEP team at Blythewood Academy. Student number four, we'd like to table that. And then, on our addendum, student number one, Blythewood Academy. Student number two, uphold the appeal but for summer school only. And student number three on the addendum, Blythewood Academy.
It's been moved by Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
Second by Ms. Brill. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much. We'd like to go back on our agenda, if we may, to a special recognition, because one young man just came in. We certainly want to honor him. So we'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Ruth.
Absolutely. If we could have Raqib Siddique come forward in this, I believe Mr. Timoney's still here. If you want to come up front, we'll get your picture too. So I will go over this in a little more detail than I did last time, and still, it will be oversimplified, I promise you. He was named the South Carolina Stockholm Junior Water Prize State Winner. The Stockholm Junior Water Prize is the world's most prestigious youth award for a water-related science project. The prize taps into the unlimited potential of today's high school students as they seek to address current and future water challenges. Raqib's project used crushed dandelions to successfully remove lead from wastewater. Like I said, very simplified description. His work means he has found a cheaper renewable alternative for removing pollutants from wastewater, and the next step is to compete for the national title, and we wish you all the luck. Great job.
Thank you very much. We need to go back to one item that was under our Personnel Matters and vote on that matter. Board members, if you will pull that up under the Executive Session items and take a look at that item. I'll then, once you've looked at it, I'll entertain a motion from a member of the board to vote on that item, once you've had a moment to review that item. Now that you've had an opportunity to review that, the Chair will entertain a motion regarding that item.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve this appointment.
Approved by Ms. Brill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Plank. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, under all business action requested, is the approval of policy JII. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, policy JII has to do with concerns, complaints, and grievances, and you had a reading at your last meeting. This is the final request for approval of the changes in that policy.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Plank.
Recommend that to approve the revision to policy JII as outlined.
It's been moved by Ms. Plank. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Mackey. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the approval of policy BDE, board committees. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Policy BDE allows with the revision, the board to commit, to develop committees of the board members, and this is the second reading. We're asking for approval of that change.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve policy BDE as outlined.
It's been moved by Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
Second by Ms. Brill. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the approval of the alternative to the expulsion recommendations for certain categories of offenses. Dr. Hamm.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're requesting approval of this alternative. It was reviewed with you at your last board meeting. Your recommendations were incorporated into the procedures, and we're requesting approval to move ahead with this as an alternative to expulsion, starting with the upcoming school year.
Move, approval.
It's been moved by Ms. Brill.
Second.
Second by Mr. Manning. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, under new business, no action requested, report on the National Board Teachers as Mentors. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. One of the interests of the board has been to see how we could better leverage our National Board Teachers to make improvements in the school district. So Nancy Gregory convened a group that has been looking at how we might utilize our National Board Teachers, and they have some recommendations in this report.
Good evening, Chairman Jackson, board members, Dr. Hamm. This report, a National Board Teachers as Mentors, is for information, and want to tell you a little bit about our purpose. Our purpose is to formalize a district mentoring program. We have not had a formal program in a number of years, and also to leverage the talents of our nationally board-certified teachers where they would provide ongoing support at school sites. In addition, support the professional growth and retention of teachers over time. We would continue with the instructional coaches that we now have in place, as they're an important part of our induction program. They primarily work with first and second-year teachers. This would actually provide another layer of support. It would be a phase-in, starting with elementary schools this next school year. With our pilot, we've worked with the lead instructional coaches over this last year, and I believe Kathy O'Quinn is here. She is one of our lead coaches, and she'll stand. She, along with Belinda Flohr, attended a national symposium of teacher excellence to look at what was going on in the national level, and they researched and visited other districts with exemplary programs to see what was the best of the best. In addition, we met with a teacher focus group, and we also met and surveyed our elementary principals. And with that, our recommendations and next steps are to utilize a work group to finalize an implementation plan, to work with principals to actually match the mentors and induction teachers, and to schedule training and foundations of mentoring for mentors in the fall with follow-up support. And so what we believe is accelerating the effectiveness of our new teachers is a critical link to teacher success and student success. So what we are proposing and what we would like to do is return to a formal mentoring program, leveraging our National Board Teachers and all of the talent they bring to Richland too, and start next year with a phase-in in 2015-16 with elementary, where these are our greatest numbers of new teachers. Any questions?
Questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I have two questions. One is, will the National Board Teachers receive any stipends for this?
No, they would not.
Okay, and the other question, when will they mentor these teachers? During the school hours or after school hours?
It will be a combination. We, it will be mainly during the school day, during their planning time before school, after school. We feel it's important that we have someone on site, and we have mentors now. Principals assign mentors to all beginning and new teachers, but this would be an ongoing relationship, more formalized relationship with the National Board Certified Teachers. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Other questions or comments on the board?
Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I just, I applaud the district for taking this step. I think that this is important. Your belief statement, I think, says it all, and I appreciate us moving forward with these resources to improve our district.
Well, we're really proud of our retention rate. We do have a fairly high retention rate, 93% this year for our teachers, but we feel like we could do more, leverage our National Board Certified Teachers, and we're not looking at just the first and second year. We're looking at building those relationships over time and looking at student success. So thank you for your support.
Other questions or comments on the board? Ms. Gregory, as a, sort of following up on Dr. Elkins Johnson's question, I'm assuming the plan would be to try to link them up with teachers in their school?
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. And again, it's because you would have that ongoing support all the time. The instructional coaches go from school to school to school and have a number of teachers on their caseload, and so we think this would just strengthen building relationships with other teachers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do, on that comment though, I do want to make sure that if we have some schools that have less National Board Certified Teachers, that seems like that would put them at a deficit at some point.
Well, actually, we've looked at the numbers, and that's not, not an issue. They're pretty well distributed, because that's one of the first things we did. We met with Michelle Taylor Brown. We looked at the number of National Board Certified Teachers, and we have probably about 128 is what we're looking at at the elementary school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the proposal, policy IKF and IKF-R, graduation requirements. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Actually, the rest of this agenda is really the Nancy Gregory Show. She's going to brief you on the graduation requirements.
This policy is pretty much just a formality. It's the policy and regulations, and what it is doing is removing that old language about the H-SAP exit exam that no longer exists, and also any old language we had about the Diploma of Merit, Star Diploma. Again, these diplomas do not exist any longer, and one major change from the Career Prep Diploma Program, we're removing the word diploma after consulting with the Department of Education and calling it the Career Prep Program Certificate. So those are the primary changes here.
Questions or comments on the board? Thank you very much, Ms. Gregory. Next on our agenda is the proposal, policy IKEA, high school credit for middle school. Dr. Hamm.
Mrs. Gregory will be presenting this one as well.
Again, very simple formality. We're removing sixth grade out of this policy to reflect current South Carolina Department of Education regulations, and so that's all we're doing is taking the sixth grade out of the high school credit for middle school.
Questions or comments on the board? One question I had, Ms. Gregory, earlier was, we referenced that credits may be awarded in increments of one-fourth, one-half, and one. Do we have any courses where we're awarding one-fourth credit?
Not to my knowledge, and I'll turn around and ask, but that is verbiage that the State Department supplies, and that's why it was in that original policy, and I did not change it.
Just wondering.
I wondered the same thing and checked, because I was not aware of anything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the agenda items for our June 23rd, 2015 board meeting, which will be right back here at Polo Road. Dr. Hamm.
Mr. Chairman, we will be asking for approval of policy IKF, the graduation requirements, IKEA, the high school credit for middle school policy. We'll be giving you a report on the nine priorities, the plans and recommendations from that, an update on R2I2, which is the monthly update that the board gets on R2I2, and the superintendent's end-of-year report.
Dr. Hamm, would you reference under the future agenda, because board members asked at our last meeting regarding items that have not risen to the board agenda in terms of those that are planned and scheduled, and the motive behind them being planned and scheduled for later in the summer?
We've requested a delay until July to give you a report on food services, so that we would have all of the data through the end of the school year. Magnet schools and expanded choice, we're just now closing those choice options. If we do it in July, again, we'll be able to give you a full school year report on both of those. And then later in July, we'd also like to do some information about lead-certified schools and facilities, but a few items were delayed while we completed the school year, so you'd get the complete year of data.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional items that the board would like to add to the June 23rd board meeting or a future board agenda? Okay, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our second public participation session. No one signed up for this as well. However, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come and address the board, you may do so at this time. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our board and superintendent comments. We'll start with Ms. Mackey.
Just the usual. Thank you all for being here tonight at summer officially, and you're still working, and thank you all for your time in supporting the community. Graduation, Susan said it earlier, I mean, that just made it all worthwhile and makes you realize why you do what you do. A special little something for Ralph. We're going to miss you, Mr. Smith, in this district. You've gotten, you know, you are a foundation, a pivotal part of the community, and we're certainly going to miss you and wish you well in your new role as well. certainly going to miss you and wish you well in your new role as well. But have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Plank.
Yes, I also agree with Ms. Mackey on her comments, and Susan, you did say it best in your inspirational moment. But I also want to thank just the school's hospitality for those I've visited and spent time, getting to know many of you, and I spend a real pleasure in doing that over the, what seems like the full year, but I realize it was just since November. But it has gone by very quickly. I want to thank, a special thank you to my fellow board members, especially the four of you who have been on the board and greeted the three of us, newbies, with such open arms, spending time with us, taking time to show us the way, and really appreciate that, that means a lot of time, so thank you. To the district office for doing the same thing, and Dr. Miley for spending four hours one-on-one during budget season. I think I understand what a mill means now, and understand all that stuff, so thank you for that, that was big. And other than that, I just look forward to a safe and exciting summer, and look forward to getting back here and getting right back to the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plank. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
No comments, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Ms. Brill.
I want to congratulate the gentleman with the science project, and I wondered what else dandelions could do. Very curious, that's just awesome. So congratulations, it makes all of us proud. I hope you continue to win and do well, and keep us informed. So I hope you all have a healthy, safe summer, and just appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Manning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank our athletic trainers. Jason, I know you got the award today, but all of our district athletic trainers go above and beyond with their time and organization and the health of our athletes, to the point where we have other districts calling us to see what we're doing and how they can get organized and really rise to the level where our folks are. So they put in long hours, I remember the 80-hour weeks when I was there, for low pay and high risk, so I appreciate the work that all of y'all are doing in our district for the health of our athletes. Also want to thank our fellow board members, I know we kind of had a smooth meeting, but we made some big changes tonight with our board subcommittees, to allow us to really dig into some of the issues that we need to with the district, our size, the number of students. We felt like we really needed to have a venue for us to get more into, get more information and be more a part of what's going on. So I applaud our board members for getting that done, and also the alternative to expulsion for our students that have sexual offenses. We all know the issues that we face with our youth, and so I think we're taking the right step in that direction to allow them to grow instead of just the punitive measures that come with it. So thank you to fellow board members for some big steps tonight, and I hope everybody will enjoy a little bit of downtime during the summer. Still busy, but different, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Dr. Ham.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Mrs. Brill for so well summarizing the satisfaction in a good school year, so I won't say anything more about that. But this is the time of year, lots of times, people will say, "Well, what are you doing this summer?" Like, "I'm going to be sipping tea by school." And so is the rest of the administrative staff. So I just want to reiterate that our work goes on during the summer. Actually, starting tomorrow, we're going to have over 800 people at a Midland Summit that just shows what a star, actually, Richland Two is in the world of technology, so we're excited about that. And we have professional development going on throughout the summer for our students, we have summer camps, all kinds of summer learning activities. So just rest assured, nobody's sitting at their desk drinking tea, we'll be hard at work.
Thank you, Dr. Ham. I'm going to echo what my fellow board members have said, and to thank everyone for a great year, and a tremendous year for us as a district. I want to thank my colleagues on the board for allowing me the opportunity. Next board meeting will be my last board meeting as chair. I want to thank my fellow colleagues for the opportunity to serve as chair for the past 18 months, and I look forward enthusiastically to turning it over to someone else. Wish them the very, very best. Certainly, they've tried very diligently to be inclusive and to make sure that we were represented as one group, and I want to thank the new board members in particular for coming on board and working really hard to ensure that the synergy that's necessary for us to provide leadership has been in place. So thank you, Ms. Mackey, very much. And thank you, Mr. Plank, very much, and thank you, Dr. Cheryl Caution-Parker, in your absence very much, for your commitment to being a part of a unit. But also, without a doubt, I want to thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson, and you, Ms. Brill, and Mr. Manning, for your work and continued work in making sure that there was that continuity from the old to the new. So we look forward to a somewhat downtime during the summer, that was one board meeting in July, but back at it again in August. Thank you, everyone who's been here tonight. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Manning.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Stand adjourned. Thank you very much, have a good night and a great summer, folks.